Good evening. It is 6:30 PM, October 12, 2023, and I'd like to welcome everyone in the room and those participating online as I call to order this meeting of the Belbrook Children's Free-forming Education for the purpose of conducting school districts' business. We value everyone's input and have made sure to dedicate a portion of this meeting to hear from you. We look forward to your comments during that time, as indicated on our agenda. Mr. Lyman, we please call to order.
Mr. Karsner.
Here.
Mrs. Dorn.
Here.
Mr. Kinsey.
Present.
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mrs. Sanders.
Here.
If you're able to stand, we please stand or join. We congratulate you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special presentation tonight. We're all getting trained on some new technology here. Boarddocs is one of our new transparency initiatives. It's going to help out get some information out to the community. So, John Adams, thank you very much for being here.
That's my pleasure. Thank you for having me. I'm going to start by recording this, and this is for the benefit of the board that they can re-watch this at any time. So just a moment here with me, I'll start my recording.
This meeting is being recorded.
I'm excited to bring to you Boarddocs. I've had the pleasure of working with the administration over the past month and a half or so, teaching them their piece on building the agenda and so forth. And so we're at the point now where we want to share the board with the public. So I'll walk everybody through on how to access Boarddocs. Boarddocs is a website. It's not an app. You'll never find an app that says Boarddocs in the App Store. You're always going to get to Boarddocs through a browser on a computer or a mobile device. So as you can see, I'm going to share my screen here for you. And I'm starting with your district website because there is a link to come into the Boarddoc site for everyone within your district site. So if you go to the About Us tab and come down to the School Board area, and once you click that, you'll come down a little bit further where it says Board Agendas. And here is where you'll see that Board Agendas are now on Boarddocs, and there's some narrative here for you. The important thing is on the second paragraph, there's a link right here. And so everybody can come in with that link, board members, staff members, public. And when people click on that link, this is where they land into the Boarddoc site. You can see that there's some narrative here about your meetings, kind of the cadence of your meetings, and information about specific board member terms and so forth. What you see front and center, which is really nice, there's ways to feature meetings. Meetings that are ones that most people are going to come in because either ones that are just about ready to happen or they happened not too long ago. So you'll see this change over time. What you see in the top right-hand corner, of course, is a dedicated Meetings tab because as you continue to use Boarddocs longer and longer, this is the repository of all of your meetings moving forward. So obviously, right now, we just have one agenda in here, but this is where people will come to look for all of those into the future. You have been using Boarddocs for your policies for a while, and the Policies tab is the same. You can still get to your policies just like you could before within Boarddocs. It's just that you upgraded your Boarddoc subscription, so it now includes your agendas as well. Before we get into the meetings, I do want to highlight a couple of other items for the board. Right above the area where it says Featured in Meetings, you'll notice that there's a slim black header, and there, there's a couple of icons. Now, I don't want you to click on the icon I'm going to describe first. It's the little house. What that does is anyone that clicks that, it takes you out of Boarddocs. It takes you back to Belbrook, where your website, your district website. So that's a way to get easily back to your district website, should you ever want to do that. Next to that is a universal search. I'm going to end the training showing you how to search for content, so I'm going to skip that right now. But the icon just to the right of that, that looks like the outline of a head that's called the avatar, for board members, you have the ability to log in because, as you're aware, as a board member, occasionally you do have some information, such as personnel or student issues, that you need to see that the public does not have access to. So you need to make sure that you log in, so you are able to see that confidential information for those items that you need to see that confidential information. So I'll walk you through on how to do that. So once you click your avatar, you'll notice if you are not logged in already, it'll say login. If you already are logged in, it will show your name and a short menu. So I'm going to go ahead and log in. I have some training credentials here. So here would be my username and my password, of course, and I go. All right. Because once you're authenticated, then you're able to see those areas on the agenda. But you also have a secondary search, and I'll show you that when we're in the search area. So that's another reason why we would want you to log in. Oh, sorry, that's my password manager. Sorry about that. So if you're logged in, when you go to your avatar, you'll have a short menu here. Again, my menu is a little bit different simply because of mine, I logged in as a trainee. But one of the things that you do have is change password. So you have been given a username and a password, and you can change your password at any time through that Change Password area. I'll just click it so you can see what that looks like. You can see that your first password would be entered, and then you create a new one. Board members, there are rules to the password in Boarddocs, and you'll see those rules on the right-hand side. So at some point, you probably want to entertain changing a password. I'm just going to cancel this right now and get back into Boarddocs. All right. Okay, so that's your avatar. Now, let's talk about the meetings. Obviously, I can look at the meeting here, and I can click and access the agenda here, or, like I mentioned before, you can go to the Meetings tab when you have multiple meetings and you want to look back at historical meetings perhaps. All right. So I'm just going to give this one a single click, and everything in Boarddocs obviously is one click. So just give it a click. And what you'll see in the center of your screen is a little bit more information about the meeting, where it's at, what time, those types of things. And then you'll have several buttons, and so will the public. View the Agenda allows you to look at it on your computer on Boarddocs. Download an Agenda. Some people like to have an agenda in an electronic form. You can do that. Print the Agenda, and then there's a couple of other tools. There's a Minutes tool in Boarddocs, and you would actually have a few Minutes button at some point to be able to see the minutes of this meeting as well, a little bit later on. So for tonight, we're just going to view the agenda. So if everybody just clicks that. And what that does is it expands the agenda. And now what you have are actually two sides. This left-hand side, where it starts with Welcome and then Call to Order. Board members, this is your order of business, and it has a separate screen. And so this is just your agenda all the way from Call to Order to When You Which Erred. What you see on the right-hand side is all of the content associated with one agenda item at a time that you've hooked up. So starting at the top, Call to Order and Roll Call. If you look at the right-hand side, you'll notice the third line down that says Subject. This is Call to Order. Obviously, there's not a lot to do with Call to Order. It's just a procedural item as the board opens the meeting. And then what you would do is just click on the items on the left, and so will the public. And then that information is on the right. Now, board members, when you see a small icon that looks like a piece of paper, that's an indication that there's additional information for you to open in the form of a PDF document. So in this example, the minutes of September 14th, you can see this is the name of the item I'm looking at. The superintendent's recommendation statement is here for you to consider as well. And then you'll notice that there is that document. These documents open up seamlessly. When you click on these, and I could invite you to do that, it opens up in a new tab in your browser. So you're not logged out of Boarddocs. You're still on Boarddocs on another page. Obviously, these are my minutes again. I can zoom in. There's a plus and minus up at the top. If you're ever on a touchscreen computer, you can pinch and pull just like that if you're using a touchscreen computer as well. So anybody that's using a mobile device can do that. Once I'm done reading these minutes, once I'm finished with this document, just click the tab, the little X that the tab has, and it closes the tab at the top of your browser. So clicking that, and you're right back. You also have a print button on any item, and so does the public. They can print out any item that you see here as well. So again, click on the left, and then read on the right. Click on the left and read on the right. Sometimes there's just narrative in there rather than document. So all of your background information would be provided on the right-hand side. Now, I know you only have one meeting in here, but if you had another meeting, the best practice to go back to another meeting is not hitting your back browser. Honestly, the best practice is hitting that Meetings tab up in the right-hand corner. Because when you hit this Meetings tab, it takes you back to your Meetings home, where you could expand it and click on another agenda. All right. So you really want to get familiar moving around Boarddocs. Honestly, when I'm in Boarddocs, I never hit my back browser. I navigate just by clicking the different tabs. So just as a review, the Featured tab, that's that page that you first come in on. The Meetings tab, of course, is your Meetings home. And the Agenda tab. Now, the Agenda tab wasn't there when you first come into Boarddocs. That takes you back to the very last agenda and the agenda item that you were looking at. Agenda, just like that. All right. Of course, your policies are in here just like before, so I'm not going to go into that. You've been using that quite a long time. So your policies are all here just like they have been before. One of the last things I want to highlight is finding information in here. Obviously, you only have one meeting right now, but soon you'll have multiple meetings in here. What's the easiest way to go and find content? And I'm going to demonstrate that with you. And that is back up in that slim black header in the top right where you see that Universal Search sign. If everybody would click that. This is the search area, and like I had mentioned, there are two different searches in here. The first one I'm going to talk about, everybody has, the public, board members, staff members, everybody. And that's the ability to search Belbrook, right? And that's the blue tabs that we see under Search, Meetings, Policies, Minutes. And look at this one, Include the Attachments. When you have these PDF documents that are attached, the text inside those documents is searchable. All right. So I want to give you an example. I'm going to put in Assessments, okay? And what you'll see is a lot of information pop up. It tells me that the word Assessments was found in a lot of different areas. It was found in a Policy item. It was found in an Out-of-State Travel item. It was found in different things throughout here, okay? If I come up and do Policy Assessments in Bird, okay, because this was one of your agenda items, it has a policy reading guarantee. It takes me to that agenda item, to that policy, and it allows me to navigate to it. In this example, it took me to the policy, okay? I could go right back to Search and search something differently. I'll just use Assessments this time. And notice that this is an agenda item. If I click the Agenda item, it shows me the name of that item. Here is the word Assessment. That's where it found it. And if I say Navigate there, it's going to take me to the Out-of-State Travel item already loaded for me. Again, you can do this, so can the public. So it makes finding your information super fast, super easy, okay? I do want to show you the search that you have since you're logged in. There's a second search for those that haven't logged in, all right? And it's in the same area. And I'm going to go right back to the search icon. And instead, I'm taking Assessments out. And you'll notice, board members, at the right-hand side, there's a little box that says Metta, M-E-T-A, all right? And I'm going to click that. When you click Metta, you are in a totally different area. What this does is it allows you to search all of the public-facing documents, agenda items, and policies that Boarddocs has on our servers from our 4,500 school districts. So it's a way for you to find what are other schools doing about a subject. What are other schools doing about perhaps something that you want to start, right? So if I put in something like pet therapy, we all love animals, right? Maybe you don't have a pet therapy program, and you're thinking of making, starting a pet therapy program. You can put this in here, and notice what this does. It says, this is an agenda item from Cape May, New Jersey. This is an agenda item from Lindenhurst, New York. This is an agenda item from Pennsylvania. You can click on these, and what it does, board members, is it gives you their public-facing agenda item. So if this was something that really was like, wow, these people are doing a great job, you now know what district this is. This is Elizabeth Town in Pennsylvania. You can call them, and then now you can speak into network. So it's a really nice tool for administrators, board members to use to do research, to see what other districts are doing about different topics. You can narrow things down. So pet therapy, and let's put Ohio. I'll just do low H. And my guess is, most of the things that are going to be showing now are for Ohio. Here's a policy for Clinton. Remember, these people, these school districts are the Boarddocs customers. So it's not all school districts in Ohio that you're searching, but rather all of the school districts that use our service. So it's a really, really nice tool. So I encourage you to use the Metta search. Now, once you're finished with the Metta search and you want to get back into your Boarddocs proper, notice that there's an X along this left-hand side, and that allows you to clear and come back to wherever you had left off. I always like to end with my Featured tab here. And I'm going to stop And I'm going to stop. I've been about 15, 16 minutes, I know you have a meeting in about 15 minutes. But if you have any questions or if there's any comments by anyone, this is the time, I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
I have a question, I think you have to relay it to her, but my question is, when you do the search, like tonight we have draft policies, so they'll show up as an Agenda item, but prior to them being on the Agenda, or Search, Show Draft Policies?
The search mimics your level of access. Okay? So if you can see draft policies in Board Docs, you can search mine. Does that make sense? It does? Thank you. You bet.
Were you asking about for other districts?
The more information of an Agenda item. I give them option to annotate.
Isn't that... That must be some, that's not within Board Docs, that must be something within your Because there's not an annotation tool with your level of Board Docs? You must have an advanced PDF program on that computer. Okay, is that what that is?
Yes.
Perhaps?
Yeah, Adobe. So if I were to utilize that, because I want to highlight that and come back and look at it later, that's only in my instance of this. I'm not highlighting that for the public to use.
Right, well honestly, it would not save it in that Agenda item. That would be something, I suppose, since that's an Adobe program, that you'd have to save that Adobe document on your computer itself, because you can't make any edits to anything that's actually in Board Docs. Does that make sense?
It does. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I couldn't. I was worried that I...
But yeah, I mean, Board Docs, I mean, Board members are executives, but the editing of the Agenda is not something that's in that level. That's something that's on a level that the Superintendent's Office has that anyway. So you can modify the document once it's uploaded, right?
Got it, thank you.
A quick question. I appreciate you showing us the search capability at the truly powerful. And I noted that you said that if you do a search, we even search attachments. And so I just, for fun, just took a look at our last amendments type of the term. It appears to me that the PDF version we have is not a OCR version, it just seems to be an image version, so I assume that we'd have to make sure that the PDF documents we create are essentially text or OCR.
Yes, exactly. Yes, yes, and that's something I touched upon, it's just that some of these documents before my training were already produced as something that wasn't OCR. But just to highlight what he's sharing here, as I open up this Minutes document, notice I cannot highlight anything. This is, this particular document is not a searchable PDF, so the individual text will not get that. But if I come down to, I believe, the Policy Review here, and I come down to this Third Grade Reading Guarantee, see how I can highlight like that? This is a searchable PDF, because I can do that. So this is obviously part of the search and I can find this document just by knowing one or two words within here. So that's the power of having a searchable PDF. Thank you.
So as a district here, we just need to make sure that all the documents we produce are searchable, OCR. Some people can go back and search Minutes or whatever easily.
Yeah, yeah. Perfect. Yeah, there's a, there's, the power of that is just great, you know, so from years from now, you can go back and find things pretty easily, so that's really nice. Any other questions that I can help you with? All right, well, on a personal note, like a million years ago, I lived in Kettering and I still have, I still have drapes about Northy Lake Market. Yeah, my husband worked for Standard Register years ago, I mean, I have grandchildren now, my kids weren't even in school yet, that's how long ago it was that we lived there. But I know exactly where you guys are and it's a beautiful area. So if you don't have any other questions, thank you so much for you choosing Board Docs and thank you so much for serving your communities, Board members.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
All right, you bet. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
How about a quick note of thanks also to our Communications and Technology folks. There's a lot of cameras and stuff around here to make sure that everybody could participate with you, so thank you for the extra effort, really appreciate it. Anybody have comments or questions just about Board Docs?
It's far more powerful than I realized. When I was initially asking that we provide Minutes, you provide, you know, Policies, I was thinking we'd put a tab, you know, on our webpage, you know? This is far more powerful than I could have dreamed, so. I know, Sheila, though you were focused on using Board Docs rather than doing what I just said, and it shows your more than two years' experience in the school district. And for seeing something that would be an improvement, I'm grateful to you, Dr. Cruzad, for, you know, exploring this option versus the Cape May one I was talking about, so I appreciate it.
Sheila's done a heavy duty on it, so.
Thank you for making our decision about.
Okay, well, our Agenda says the regular meeting starts at 7:00, so I'm going to make a motion now that we go into recess until 7 o'clock.
A second.
All right, Mrs. Dorn, seconded. Mr. Wyman, please call.
This is Dorn.
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
All right, we're in recess for seven minutes. We live?
Yep.
All right, very good. All right, now, thank you, welcome back. We are back in session and we're going to move right into the legislature. Come on.
I've taken a motion to approve the minutes from the September 14th meeting.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn and then Mrs. Anderson. Questions, comments, reactions?
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
I've taken a motion to approve the legislature report of September.
So...
Mr. Carpenter here and then Mrs. Dorn.
The legislature report is included with the agenda on the website. I wanted to highlight one item, though, if you want to go to the legislature reports, one in the bottom section to the right that is titled, Budget Harrison Report. We have 25% of fiscal year has elapsed. Fiscal year begins July 1st, July, August, and September. This is the end of September, four, three months out of the 12. 25% has elapsed and we are right at 26% or 27% in expenditures on the line items for salary, benefits, purchase services, supplies, materials, everything is pretty much in line. Capital outlay is a little high, it doesn't go to butter in the year for the school year. So finances are looking good, they're in order and everything's solid right now, so are there any questions about anything that's included in the reports?
Here, now, please call the roll on exception to the legislature.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
I've taken a motion to approve a new certificate for the amount of $17,318 to lessened home care for 22, 23 special education services. I will explain that once we have a motion for...
Second.
Mrs. Anderson. And then Mr. Carpenter.
This is one where 22, 23 services provided all year for our students. We hit PO at the end of the year and we never got an invoice. So when the fiscal year ended, we deleted the purchase order and then in September, which was about 13 months after the service began, they realized they had an invoice, this is an invoice, and we had to create a new PO dated after the date of the invoice. And it's a large amount of money, so the board has to approve that. It's just a, you know, a flip of the invoice, so we need to have approval there, so the augur will be satisfied hopefully next month.
Probably just a time issue. All right. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
And Mr. Price?
Yes.
I've taken a motion to approve a new student activity count titled High School Journalism Club with my number 200, 974.
Second.
Mrs. Dorn, Mrs. Anderson.
I've requested, Mr. Man.
Questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
I've taken a motion to, if I read this correctly, participate and authorize the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Cooperative to advertise and receive bids on the board's behalf as the specifications that would permit purchase of one handicap bus.
Second. Mrs. Dorn and then Mr. Price.
Yeah, so services increase for our students that necessitated the need for an additional handicap bus. So when one came available, especially since their buses in general are very hard to get, there's a big lead time on that, and then we're able to get one through the EPC, we don't have to bid, because the EPC does the bidding for us. And so it's about $120,000 for a three handicap bus, so I believe we'll be going up even more next calendar year, so this is...
Are those buses shorter than our standard buses?
No.
Can they be used as a backup or whatever?
Yes.
And will it come equipped with the new camera system like we had in our new four buses? You know, they've been effective at catching the bus runners?
I will check, I'm not sure if those additional cameras will purchase with this bus or not.
Okay.
I will check.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I think that really should be going in, like new buses we get.
Yeah. So we will, we will do that, and if not, then I'll come back and let you know.
Okay.
How about we do that?
Yeah.
That's my understanding, too, is additional buses going forward will come with additional cameras that we're going to purchase, so. But I will definitely check on that, if not, then I will look forward.
Other questions? Mr. Wyman, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Anything else, sir? All right, now we're going to move into Correspondence. Your thoughts and comments are very welcome during this time. When given the floor, can we share your names, address?
Wait, wait.
Our ready for this morning's topic.
Florida.
Oh, look at that. So here's the deal, I still have the written in front of me, we could have messed up all the...
Well, you're going to be started.
Yeah, okay. Correspondence, thank you. Hang on.
The German...
Your comments are not going here. All right, so anybody have any correspondence?
I received an email from a community member, so I have issues on 7/25 with people going around school buses, so I was just passing by to see if they... So, I was just passing out, obviously, if that's one of our targeted camera areas or if you.
In downtown Belbrook area?
It's all around 7/25 up here by Linda, South Linda. Somebody's running around that bus, all people come today.
That person letting the transportation department go?
I, that's where I sent her, but yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure at that, at that area that it is, I know in downtown Belbrook.
Right, I just wasn't sure if one of our buses had that camera on it.
Yeah.
That's what I said, because she's like, I was recording, I'm like, oh, you're over there. So, you are downtown and you're, you know, on 7/25 and you're running around our buses, stop.
Yeah, if you're watching this, Academy Award performance. Any other correspondence? All right, let's move into item agenda number five, good news recognition. I'd like to welcome up the middle school principal, Mrs. Hill. Thanks for being here.
Hi, thanks. Um, I am very excited to say that for the 27th year now, uh, the middle school won, uh, the Thomas Edison Governor's Excellence in STEM or as we say STEAM award, um, which is heavily involved, there's a huge application process that we complete year after year. Uh, so I'm very excited, part of my team this year, so I want to recognize each of them. Uh, a few couldn't make it due to other commitments tonight, especially new sports and that type of thing. Uh, but I want to say congratulations to Debbie Schiederman, Ally Geis, Ally Visignani, uh, and Jennifer Julian who are here with us tonight. Um, it is our entire science department, our two STEM teachers, our teacher, um, as well as one of our math teachers. And so, they fill out everything that they do to highlight, um, our STEM offerings. Uh, you have to hold the science fair, which we do every year. Um, you have to have a certain number of kids that go to district every year. Uh, and then, um, our STEAM night is a really big part of that. Uh, and a big shout out to Crete County Career Center, um, as well, with our partnership with our STEAM classes. A lot of things that we do and get to talk about that we do is our partnership with them. So, um, thank you very much for your support, uh, continue to, um, press forward and have awesome STEAM opportunities for both of you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We've definitely been a leader in STEM and STEAM for years and just when you think we can't get any better at it, then we do because we're all, like you said, brought in the career center and just taking it to the next level. So, continued growth in that area, K-12, we offer staff, so we want to do this with STEAM. We want to do this with that, so, goodness, thank you, congratulations. All right, um, next, we have Principal Appreciation Month, so October is Principal Appreciation Month. Um, we're going to celebrate our head principals this month because our assistant principals get their own month and April is. We're gonna get the most out of this, so October is Head Principal Month and April is Assistant Principals. So, if we can have Mrs. Keaton, Mr. Phelps, Mrs. Hill, Mr. Hand, come on up.
So, just wanted to say a few words, um, you know, the, these four, again along with assistant principals, that these four just go above and beyond the countless hours that they spend not only during the summer, but throughout the school year and just the hundreds, maybe thousands of things they do behind the scenes to make our school successful. Um, a lot of that just goes unnoticed because they're seamless about it, they do it behind the scenes and they do a fantastic job of leading our staff, leading our students and just through some very difficult times, COVID being one of them, um, of just coming together, doing whatever we need to do to get it done. And they just go above and beyond all the time. And so, just some of the words that, that come to mind when I think about these four, dedicated, passionate, they're advocates, tireless workers, kid-centered, they take on any challenge that comes their way and there's been many of them over the years here, critical thinkers, positive leaders, problem solvers, relentless leaders. So, um, just a fantastic group of folks here and they're just an integral part of the success that the school district has had. These four are a piece of that and just part of the whole team and they just, just want to say thank you on behalf of the school board, myself, the Belbrook Sugar Creek community and schools that guys did a fantastic job and thank you for your tireless dedication to the school district. Thank you.
I would do a cartwheel, but. One time.
Excellent, thank you, always welcome, always happy for that good news. Do we have anything for reports to report? Not tonight, I might have to that. Patiently waiting, we're gonna have a open communication period. Good thoughts and comments are very welcome during this time, sorry about that. Uh, when given the floor, please share your name, address, and any group affiliation you hold if it's relevant. You will then have five minutes for your comments, which should be directed toward the presiding officer. Tonight happens to be neat. Uh, this time generally is for the board to listen and absorb and as such, traditionally, a dialogue is not created in this moment. In case you're wondering, the reason for these policies, which can be read in their entirety on the district's website and policy number 169 dot 91, is to ensure that as many people as possible have the opportunity to speak and that everyone is treated equally in fairness. First up, I would like to welcome Eric Price. Thanks very much for being here.
Hello, my name is Eric Price, I live at 2485 Slick Road. My son is a student at, uh, Belbrook Middle School. Uh, six months ago, I'm going to quote, "The example of bullying were given to the school board identifying a very concerning culture of bullying here at Belbrook, uh, Belbrook Sugar Creek Schools." These four members expressed their concern about bullying. I put a couple of words together from the National Threat Assessment Center. It's part of the, uh, United States Secret Service to report the analysis of targeted school violence from 2019 and averting targeted school violence from 2021. And it says, "The major, uh, majority of school violence involves grievances. The most frequent, uh, grievance involved classmates and these peer grievances were usually related to bullying. Bullying students often feel hopeless, desperate, or out of options. Students often feel hopeless and out of options and believe violence is the only way to solve a problem or settle a grievance." In their example, a 14-year-old student fatally shot a classmate at his middle school. The victim has been subject to harassment by the attacker and other students who had called him, uh, called victim derogatory homophobic aims. The attacker later reported the victim had made comments that made him uncomfortable, citing them as the final straw in his decision to attack. Following the April meeting, there should have been an investigation done to determine the level of bullying occurring in the Belbrook, uh, Sugar Creek school system. I would like to formally request the following. Name of the investigators and their experience, basically resume. Um, if the investigation was without commission and the following portions of the request uh, exclude any form of, uh, personally identifying information. I understand some information may be rejected to protect the identity of students or school staff. And that would be the summary of results of the investigation, the incidents of bullying uh, towards students or towards teachers and or staff, and recommended actions. Also, or in addition, full text communications concerning policy changes that impact student security. I'm concerned for my son's safety as all parents should be concerned for their children's safety, considering the culture of bullying that was reported back in April. I responded to many incidences of abuse when I worked law enforcement. That involved, um, they kept the child in the abuser's care because of parental rights, which seems to be the buzzword of the day within society. Teachers are being accused of indoctrination when they are in fact trying to create an environment abusive to learning for all, where time and resources are thin and involvement threats exist. A parent has no right to allow their children to bring to school a hostile environment they created at home. Eliminating this culture of bullying must be a priority for the school system. It has the potential of creating an unsafe environment for my child and every other child's learning and safety. Bullying must be rooted out and extinguished for the safety of our children and the effectiveness of their learning. See forward movement would help to minimize mine and any other parents' concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your words. Uh, next is Elise Thompson. Welcome, thanks for being here.
Thank you. My name is Elise Thompson, I live at 4024 Melville Spence, I'm a military spouse, my hero goes here and is at ECI. Um, and I'm also in charge of mental health for first responders and their family members. And the reason why I say that is because for mental health, these officers are paramount. I listen to what they say and I had heard rumor that SROs did not like our main teachers. And my clients who are SROs have also said that. And then I decided to check the National Association of School Resource Officers and they were very clear. So, I brought handouts and those military spouses and everything. Just something to be for the record. Um, I don't like it, my clients don't like it, it's very secret, I know that the community doesn't like that. But I think one thing we can approve is more training. Um, I do de-escalation, but that's kind of a conflict of interest because my kid goes here. I really, really like Mental Health America. They do classes for first responders, they're out of Blue Ash. And I have here a schedule of their classes and advanced critical incident training. I think, I think this is something we can all get on board, even if we don't like guns in schools or if we do like guns in schools, this is a school, we love education, and more training certainly would be beneficial. Thank you. You're so kind. Thank you. Okay. Is this one back there or is there? Uh, two, one for the advanced CIT training and then the other for the upcoming trainings. I know that the people who are caring guys are secret, I know that their training is secret, uh, so I don't know who to give it to, so I'm just going to disseminate and trust. One of the reasons we moved to Belbrook is because it's a Purple Star School, meaning that there are requirements for military kids. There are also recommendations, one recommendation is our protections for LGBTQ kids. Obviously, Belbrook didn't do that, but I think we can do the next one, which is free kindergarten for military families. We get federal money for every single military connected student who attends here, it shouldn't be a problem. And I think it would just be a really great thing to do. One great thing that Belbrook already does is free kindergarten for people who qualify for free lunch. But because of some tax funniness, when it comes to BAH, that doesn't work and they often are kicked out of there, even though functionally they can. Now, I spoke with Mrs. Doran a little bit and I said I would give some more paperwork. So, I have causal factors of military and veteran family food insecurity. Uh, this one is a qualitative out of Texas, I can choose between Texas and Virginia. I just, Texas seemed pretty good and not to mention that all of these resources are definitely something to follow. And the reason why this is important to me is because when my husband was stationed at Kirtland Air Force Base, we were about to leave and as military families move around a lot. And I just put on Facebook, hey, does anyone want the inside of my refrigerator, it's gonna spoil. And I got really angry because I don't like how we treat our enlisted service members especially. There was a pylon for the junior enlisted for the inside of my fridge. Like, that sticks with me, doesn't it? Just that military families are so poor. And that's exacerbated by the tax issue that there's a pylon for the inside of a fridge. My fridge, like, that was, that, that stuck with me, so that's part of why I'm so passionate. Uh, and then if you don't want to read the report, I have a little one from CNN. Right. Um, and I would really like to hurry on this because we have another upcoming government shutdown. Um, we don't have a Speaker of the House, what happens in DC today affects my husband today and night, along with every other military family. So, if we can solve this, because we have the federal money, uh, it's a recommendation from Purple Star Schools, so it would keep us, it would keep us there. And, um, it would keep our military families who are already struggling. It would give them a piece of mind and we have an upcoming date coming up. This is from the Stars and Stripes, which is the military newspaper. If you've ever seen the hardest write on the block that talks about the delivery of Stars and Stripes to the wildest part of Afghanistan, it's really, really cool. Um, so it talks about how military families were preparing for the shutdown before and gives you guys the sense of urgency that all military families are facing, especially our junior enlisted. And that's it, thank you.
What other questions?
I thought this was a you are supposed to listen and absorb.
I was just, I was just curious, you mentioned the age, what is that?
Uh, base housing allowance. Yeah. Oh, thank you, that's kind of you, put something on my printer. Okay, thank you. Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next, Brian Crooner. Welcome, thanks very much for being here.
Brian Crooner, who owns Fort Washington Road, uh, who is present and speaks as corrected to you and also to Padraig. A Russian writer once wrote, "The simplest step of courage of a courageous individual is not take part in the lie. One word of truth outweighs a war. He's a noble order." As our country continues to go on this path of partnership, I would like you two to remember those words. We live in a world of mass disinformation, lies are being told to us daily, following us, allowing us to forget our humanity and why we are here. They are meant to divide, stoke danger, anger, cause jealousy, and allow irrational policy decisions without justification. They are not grounded in logic, quite the opposite, they are founded in fear and personal emotions. For instance, a citizen of Belrock asked me about my thoughts on transgenderism problem. I said it is not a problem in our schools. He then told me that it's a huge problem, in fact, it is such a huge problem that we now have people identifying as cats in our schools and they use litter boxes. After some back and forth, I realized this person adamantly believes, believes it and I will not be able to convince otherwise. I found out later that this person actually holds political office in our town. When a courageous individual wants to take steps not to be part of a lie, they must do the hardest thing first, research and realize that they are wrong. Now, let us say it is true, someone is using a litter box in school. Teenagers are just as disgusting as they always have been. And scooping a kitty litter box daily will be the least disgusting thing a janitor will have to deal with in a high school bathroom. I direct this to you because I believe you two would be high functioning and logical. Though we may disagree on many things, I do respect your opinions and how you take your conclusions. I say this with the utmost concern, should the board continue to fear very right of center, you two may be in the minority. Next year, it could be you two along with three people that will take steps to make very logical and very emotionally driven initiatives. One member has also, has already stated that adding LGBTQ language back into parts of the anti-arrestment policy is too much. Apparently, adding it back into the anti-arrestment policy would give heart punch waiver to those who may bully people for other reasons, yet removing specifically LGBTQ plus language is just a okay. Do you see the mental gymnastics that one needs to take to get the intended purpose without guilt? They said they would like to see it just save all harassment. Well, newsflash, our constitution says we the people, it doesn't say we the white male landowners. And yet luckily for some of you, civil rights amendments have been added to allow women and people of color to vote. Another person is likely to push for every anti-vaccine, every anti-mask and anti-science initiative the fringe of the internet has provided through charity and science, articles, snippets, and formerly non-controlled, non-sophisticated. Articles, snippets and performing non-controlled, non-sophisticated experiments, they will convince others that they are right and legitimate experts are wrong. Though it may come from good intentions and well-meaning place, this person has done more to hurt the scientific community than to help. Finally, you will have a member who will find the next issue brought to them by others, make it their own and ride on those coattails for a while, providing zero input other than reorienting what they have heard from select people. This member has championed us and yet has not given any praise to the original one who brought it up. The original person went out and collected 300 signatures to prove to the board that there was a busing problem. The other presidential person will gain excellent addition to the board, and her name is Isaac Hitler. This member latched onto someone else's work, acts like his own and watches way too much of Fox News. In true form, this member is now latching onto someone else's agenda. The anti-mask, anti-transgender and most shocking of all, toying with the idea of banning books. However, based on recent statements, it would seem that they are single-handedly leading achievements of our district's five-star rating, couldn't have been the teachers or educational professions. A successful democracy functions by having people of opposite ideas coming together to find a solution. It doesn't come from stacking the scales of the board in one direction, and it certainly doesn't come from banning books. Should this high-federal board come into fruition next year, I hope that you will remember what I have said.
Up next, we would like to welcome Allison Visomann. Congratulations again on your award.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, yes, my name is Allison Visomann. I live on Rose Lake Drive. I taught at Belrop Schools for, or I taught at Belrop Schools maybe 11 years prior to this year. And I just wanted to bring up a concern I have about education. I think it's something we can always work on. The meeting where the safety task force was created, there was a multitude of staff and community members that came out to listen, which was really a turning point for me. And not in a good way. So it's something that I'm ready to write off. I listened to Mark Correa. He's the teacher union president, and he was speaking, and I was concerned about what he was saying. He was pleading with the board not to make a decision today and to talk to the teachers before implementing the change. Now, teachers don't usually speak at school board meetings. The reason I did not speak was because I didn't want parents to see me in political light. I think that was right. And I did not want the school board to have any problems with me. If that was fair. But Mark talking for me, I thought he went a little far. After all, the community turned out. There was no way our board would make a decision that night. The turning point was when the board did make the decision without talking to the teachers who love the school. And Mark was right in his speech. Six or seven meetings later, but from my understanding, no teachers on the board or the committee should have done this school. And I'm concerned in part because the experts in our school are these teachers, the staff members and administrators. And I do realize there's administrators on this committee, but not at every level. And we have four buildings, and I think four buildings support, have representation reach because there are about experts at those buildings. And who really knows our schools better than them? I ask that you please work to repair this relationship with our teachers. They're very important, and at least I felt that strength. I am not a teacher here anymore, but I, when I was here, I did feel that strength. I also ask that you please believe the staff in your building are experts in their debates and deserve to have a voice. The teachers are experts. The janitors are experts. We're experts in these buildings. And we should have a voice, both before a decision is made and then in your committees. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That's obviously very heartfelt and genuine. Thank you very much. Uh, next, Meredith Brenner. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me. My name is Meredith Brenner, and I'm in Belrop. And first, I just want to commend you for using Word docs to post the agendas associated documents. I had a chance to look at that. I thought it was pretty slick and kind of slick from your end as well. Tonight, I'd like to summarize some of the policy changes, getting a first read tonight, and ask a few questions about them. I won't address all policies since some only have what I do to be fairly insignificant changes. I'm gonna start with the public complaints policy, since that's been the most expensive rewrites, and I go with numerical order with a few others. So the first one is 9130, public complaints. So the old policy used to involve the county curriculum director, the county superintendent, but my understanding is that's kind of what we used to do. And most districts now have an in-house person to handle curriculum these days. So the new policy fills out four levels of action when a member of the public has a complaint about instructional materials. Level one, the complaintant fills out a form that goes to the teacher and principal or library and principal, depending on the location of the instructional material, you know, classroom versus library. And I'm guessing this form will be available online, but that would be helpful for the board to clarify. Level two is, is only able to be resolved at level one. It proceeds to the next level and involves the director of curriculum. And the director may work with the superintendent and also has the ability to form a review committee, which can include teachers and parents. So the review committee then is level three, and they make a recommendation to the director of curriculum, superintendent, and superintendent has management authority. Finally, a complaint wishes to file an appeal and then goes to the school board, which is level four, and they have six days to make the decision. This sounds like a pretty reasonable policy. I am curious if this applies to public complaints about proposed instructional materials or if that would be applicable. The next policy is 12, finding employment of the superintendent. Basically, they reviewed the parental references, sexual orientation and transgender identity as inclusive under the employment protections for sex. I guess this was just an oversight from, when you start out, those same protections for students, teachers and staff. 1545, related to dismissal, suspension and non-renewal of administrative personnel. This policy has been entirely rescinded. Why? I mean, it's clear we have had two high-profile instances involving administrators in the last couple of years. Is this related in some way? Are you attempting to make it easier to dismiss administrators? I mean, maybe I'm far out in left field, but, so I hope the board will share the rationale for why this is being deleted entirely instead of being updated. The next policy is 5111, eligibility of resident and non-resident students. What are the changes? I didn't see any highlighted changes, and it didn't seem like this was a brand new policy. Maybe that was just a technical error. 5136, related to personal communication devices. This was another striking out of LGBTQ protections. I guess another oversight from April. 8450.01, protective facial covering during pandemic and epidemic events. Rescinding the entire policy. Now, part of this policy had stated that the superintendent will issue guidance in alignment with public officials and/or in accordance with our competitions. So were we in violation of our own policy here we didn't require masks? It did seem to go against the Green County Department of Health's recommendation at that time. Another related policy, 8450, control of casual contact to communicate diseases. This sentence was deleted from the existing policy. Just one sentence was struck out. Quote, "Protocols established by the county health department shall be followed." The word was "shall," not "may." Again, were we out of compliance during the 21, 22 school year? Finally, 8600, transportation. The changes, actually, the content changes seems benign, but the state board of ed is replaced by the department of ed in several places. Is this a sign of the creation of new educations or are they due? I don't know. We're gonna start to see more of that, but I wasn't sure if that was the reason. So I do look forward to hearing your answers to my questions, if not tonight, then at the next meeting, since that's my understanding of why we do a first read, to give the community opportunity to ask questions for my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think later our agenda is our policy section. I hope some of those will be answered.
Okay.
Thank you. Up next is Anne Prior.
My question's been answered.
Okay. And last on my list is Mike Prudman. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Hello. Yeah. Thanks. I'm Mike Prudman, the current Belrop president. And I missed a few meetings, out of town for work unfortunately, but I wanted to touch base on a couple of things as I try to read the newspaper and keep up on things. A lot of these things have already been discussed, so I'll just, we'll cut my time short here, but... I did see a social media post where it talked about the new subdivision that may be built. I think it's that way, right next to here to the middle school. One of the school board members said that it was widely tabled till the next meeting in response to community feedback. I wish that we would have taken that same advice for other scenarios that we've gone through here in the last year similar to what Visomann, I haven't mentioned here. Not for both of those instances. Also, during the last couple of days, I've kind of done a review of all the, all the policies. I had many of the same questions. I may have done one of those here in just a minute, but I also reviewed a lot of the material for the upcoming school board election. A lot of challenges. We've heard some of it tonight, going to the politicization of the school board and the school district and culture and society. I know I've gotten appearance written a few times about a few of those issues, trying to stay out of the news, or pushing things further and further to the right than maybe what society or societal hierarchy is doing. So in that regard, I did find it interesting that some of the folks either currently on the school board or are running, or are kind of having a, maybe a public hearing for the politicization. I did find it interesting that some of the folks that are running on their websites, they say, and here I'm quoting from one of the websites, four out of the top five issues are guns, CRT, gender identity and masks. So again, that sounds very right-wing to me and very, not what I actually really care about in terms of electing the school board member. Those things, yeah, yes, I, I probably lean to the other side of maybe not wanting guns in school. CRT, I just, it's an issue for me. Gender, same thing. I know it is for some people. But to say that, I think they're the political, what it's size, yes, I think that's very, very evident just by the, by folks' own words. By that being said, some of the other candidates, or some candidates said that they're very interested in the safety of our students. As, as many of you know, I've been in here in the past, I have a feeling for some of that safety. I'm not so much worried about my sons with gun violence, but with COVID and all the issues that have come along with that. I certainly hear more people coughing in general, it seems like. Maybe I'm more sensitive to that, but with all, with all the COVID funding that we've had, I, I don't know that I've heard, and it could be my ignorance, but how we dealt with good air circulation in classrooms, filtering, do we have to have them filtered in every classroom? Those kind of things would really be great. One of the candidates links to a bunch of studies that says that, that trying to advocate for no masks. And one of those, I clicked on one of the studies given through our past, but I didn't notice a quote in there. Low indoor air quality in classrooms is well known to be associated with negative impact on the learning capacity of children. I like to be, you know, many factors involved there, but I certainly would like to see that addressed if it hasn't already been moving forward. So for the policies, again, I have some of the standard issues. You know, Washington Post recently put out an article that Ohio's life expectancy has declined more rapidly than the rest of the United States. They think Daily News says our open cough cases are much higher than the rest of the United States. It doesn't seem like a good policy to continue. If you're talking about safety of kids, shootings, yes. While not likely, the impact is quite severe. So you know, on, on the standard risk table, when you're analyzing that, you have to, you have to weigh that. But on a day-to-day basis, you know, meaningful pieces are, are, are important to us. I, I think that's it, other than what other folks have already covered. I don't wait until the next meeting. David, I see you're not running. Thank you for your service. I have been a crazy adventurer over the last few years, so appreciate your service there.
Be grateful for some of it.
Oh, it is. I hope, it is. I hope you do the next couple of meetings.
Through the year.
Yeah, yeah. And again, congratulations on our mid-school ratings.
So thanks for coming. Thank you very much for taking me here. All right. We've come to the end of our list. If I may, I want to maybe just kind of comment something maybe for us to think about or people watching, or if you have comments, feel free to send them to us. Just a random thought I had. Figuring out the right time to have open communication period might be kind of a struggle and even when I don't screw it up. I think the intent, and I'm just kind of just asking a historical question. The intent, I think, from just longstanding practice, was that a board would maybe not want to make decisions, and you want to hear from folks in attendance early. But then I, we also, very valid, sometimes the questions are what people might want to come ask, but we're gonna be talking about that very issue later on in the pitch event. So I don't have to answer them. I just want to say if anybody has any thoughts, maybe think about that. If anybody in the community has thoughts for improvement, feel free to email those to us. Thank you very much. So we're now gonna close our open communication period, and we are going to move into the superintendent's report. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. This is Certified Licensed Employment, resignation, leave of absence and supplemental duty. This is a consent, a consent agenda for, if you are, I'm gonna try to live in two worlds here. I paper and online. So 7A, 7B and 7C. And on your green sheet, that is 8A, 8B and 8C along with the hand carry. So that is, like I said, Certified Licensed Employment, resignation, leave of absence, supplemental duty. And that is also support staff, employment, resignation, leave of absence. And with the hand carry, that we will do from last time, or I think that will be updated. And then substitute employment, part of the consent agenda. So it's 7A, D and C, or Niola or Word docs, and then 48, ABC.
Second, moved by Mrs. Dorn, second is Mr. Carpenter for tonight's consent agenda. Questions or comments? Mr. Lang, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Next, under other action items. Payment to lieu of transportation, so recommend, recommend approval of district non-public, private school students who are eligible to receive payment to lieu of transportation services for the 2023, 2024 school year. Based on actuality of schoolless transportation, minimum maximum amounts is determined by the law of communication. Additions to the initial list approved August 10th, 2023. So we have additional, about 65 additional payment in lieu of, uh, of, of here.
Mrs. Dorn, Mr. Carpenter? Mr. Lock, please call.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
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 Next, district goals. So as presented at the last meeting, as a first read, district goals were presented, were discussed. And then also feedback, availability to the community and to teachers and staff via a survey. For a couple of weeks or so, a good decent amount of time. And so probably about 20 people total, staff plus community members provided feedback. And so there were a couple additions based on that feedback. And the first was essentially, let me see if it's on here also. So on action steps for focus three, the goal number one. So that first bullet point there, the second sentence was added because there were some questions about really what focus three is about and so forth. So just a little explanation. Don't want to get too lengthy in our district goal. But focus three seeks to build a positive culture through the mindset that everyone is responsible for a positive culture through the implementation of our culture playbook, which can be traditionally found online, and our other focus three principles. Again, both the culture playbook and our BBO, police behaviors and outcomes can be found on our district website. So that was one thing that was, that was added. Based on feedback, anticipated cost for this, if necessary, was added. Obviously, we need substitutes. We will provide those as anticipated cost. And then, of course... And then, of course, goal number two, essentially that first paragraph was reworked again, feedback was to provide some better explanation of what implementation science is. So the paragraph was changed to, "The district will apply implementation science research principles, parentheses, a purposeful approach to create and update systems, methods, strategies, processes, and conditions to support staff in effectively implementing and/or using innovations, programs, and evidence-based practices," close parentheses, "to proactively document a plan for success and implementation and long-term success of our systems, processes, and programs." So that was added in there, which is try to better explain, goal number two. Goal number three, again, there were just some minor changes to these. Goal number three, it was suggested made to add a maintenance regional staff member to the facilities committee, so that person was added.
It's called a fine arts?
I'm sorry, it was fine arts. I think we added that at the board, suggestion at the board, yeah, I'm sorry, fine arts, fine arts staff member was also added to that committee, just trying to get as much representation as possible on that facilities. And really, that was the gist of changes. So again, the, so this is a final read for approval by the board, again, with the caveat that the way that the district goals look is not the final form. This is just in a Google Doc, it's a generic kind of looking document, it's going to be a much more professional look after, after it's done. The content won't change, just the format or the way things are placed on the page will be much more vital than what it is right now.
So just to underscore, this was, we looked at it last board meeting, we contemplated approval at the time, however, interest was shown to involve teachers, staff, administration in the inputs, and that was done. So we have a product here that is, replaced the input of those, which I just mentioned before.
Correct.
And I really appreciate that that was done. I really liked that we like put in teachers on these committees, like staff members. So I really appreciate that as well.
So we're imploding to approve these, and I think I need a motion then, unless I'm listed, do we have a motion to approve the district goals?
So who?
Second, by Mr. Price, and seconded by Mrs. Dorn. Any other discussion?
It's a lot more.
And, and, it's great. Okay, Mr. Lyman, please call the roll.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
All right, thank you. At some point at another board meeting, I will come back and present the final document away, away most soon. All right, next is donation, so recommend acceptance of the following donation with gratitude, involved with clients, well, $10,000 to the supportive peers.
Someone else?
Second, Mrs. Anderson and then Mrs. Dorn.
Obviously, extremely appreciative of Delver Climes Club, you know, again, they are extremely supportive of our school system, extremely supportive of our community, they, again, once you, when you say, well, they, they're so supportive, they couldn't be even more supportive, and they can be even more supportive, I mean, just amazing work that they do. And if you want to get something done, you get lines involved, and there's some go-getter kind of folks, and just great individuals, and a great group to be a part of, and really the district and the community is really, is really lucky to have that group and part of the community.
And I, and this is obviously from here, and here to my heart, but I've been speaking to some of the lines that were involved in this decision, I think. The two things that really went into the decision, number one, were the fact that, well, the fact that this program touches every building, and there are so many students involved, but it is a district-wide program that's making such an impact, as well as the students participating in the program maybe aren't as capable as other programs to do individual fundraising, that's more challenging for some numbers of this group. So they really wanted these kids to focus on the work that they're doing and not raising the money to do the work that they're doing, and so I think that's it.
I just briefly wanted to say, only because I am a line, I'm going to choose to abstain, but I have a virtual joint with the Lions Club, which I see. All right, Mr. Lyman, please call the roll on accepting this very generous donation with gratitude.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Abstain.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, out-of-state travel, so early authorized on the approval of out-of-state travel, recommend approval of out-of-state travel assessment, the day coordinator got to Lakeville to Washington DC to attend the fall 2023 Renaissance Executive Briefing, that was October 9th and 10th, all expenses are paid by Renaissance, no costs.
Second, Mrs. Dorn, Mr. Carpenter. Questions?
So again, she was there, it's a software reuse, illuminate Renaissance own, so she was there to provide feedback and provide input, and learn more about the whole system that she has to use for that, so it's a good opportunity for her in the school district to, and when you're learning even more and bringing even more activity back.
Mr. Lyman, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dorn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Right, next, policy review, so this is the first read of draft changes to more policy than just reviews, so we're going to go over a few of these, provide a little context, little information, we're not necessarily going to go off over every single one, but we're going to hit the highlights here. So 1545 is dismissal suspension and non-ruin of administrative personnel, so that's being rescinded, that is actually a custom policy that was put into place 17 years ago or so, and really contradicts some of the things, and everything that is deeply covered in this area is covered in policies 1520, 1530, and 1541. So there's nothing that, so it was a duplication of, it's a custom policy, so there's really, as we were reviewing our policies, really no reason to duplicate, duplicate that policy since everything that was necessary was 1520, 1530.
Sir, I was curious about that one, if you'd like, no, not sure why it was going to be on there, but you say custom, you mean custom by Niola?
Or? Custom by the school district?
Also completes of Niola wasn't even, or I, but there's templates and things, or was it completely written?
It's hard to say.
You know, I don't know, that was 17 years ago, but I don't think it was based off, maybe partially it was based off a template from Niola, but it was a custom policy.
Now it makes sense, it's not just a duplication, it contradicts. Okay, that makes sense.
All right, thank you. So again, 1520, 30, and 41, all lines with what needs to be done by the O R C.
Can we say that one more?
1520, 1530, 1541, three policies that are, just 1540 is just not necessary.
Okay.
162302 is updating our third grade reading guarantee requirements, aligning with new state laws and so forth, there may be some additional changes. Next year, as some of those things continue to be tweaked, revised, came out of House School 33, so that provides a little bit more flexibility, the student does not need their grade reading test scores, they can still go up to fourth grade with parent requests, but also obviously receiving intervention and so forth. So it's not just a straight kid that needs a test score, or the alternate score, they're automatically retained, and it provides more flexibility with that. That is, that's 262302. Mrs. Dorn, you want to cover the next?
Yeah, I'll cover 1220, appointment of superintendent, and Dr. Brenner, who first earlier, that was clearly an oversight, we've gone through previous batch of policies, and puts that one superintendent policy in line with the rest of the staff policies. The next one, 5136, which is personal communication devices, there was an error, and Dr. Brenner, you may have been the first appointed itself to us a while ago, or in my case, I apologize, but there was an error in that policy that referenced policy 5517.1 as the title, that's bullying and other forms of aggressive behavior, that's the title of that policy, so that policy needed to change anyhow. But that policy also was an oversight in the previous batch, that it was the final policy that included sexual orientation and transgender identity as a parent's medical descriptor of the word sex. When we went in to try to recraft that language, we, Dr. Cozad, I appreciate any of your feedback if you think there's a better, more eloquent way to do this, but rather than reopen that can of ours, it seemed more prudent to go back and reference policies 5517, which remember is the anti-arrestment policy that we changed last go around, and also 5517.1, which is the harassment and intimidation and bullying and dating violence policy that we crafted in conjunction with our LGBT group at the high school, and our, so rather than trying to list out all the protected groups and do that in some way that met the intent, it was seeming more prudent to reference back to those other, those other policies. The intent of this policy is really, I'll be very clear, is to say that if something is bullying, harassment, if something is wrong to do in person, or in the real life form, it is also wrong to do using your phone or using your device. That's the intent. And if I have any feedback on how to capture that better, feel free to provide it for the public, if you have comments on these policies, it's better if you provide them to us earlier, because it becomes very challenging to recraft and re-edit these live and in person, in a meeting, but hopefully to entertain, but that's the intent. It's really just to make it clear that if you're not going to do it live and in person, if that's bad, if that's wrong, if that would get you discipline, feeling it in the flesh, you should also not do it with your phone or with your computer.
All right, some other to highlight is 8210. So essentially, there's such a thing as lizard bags, I know we're not in the snow yet, lizard bags essentially making up hours, providing work to students in the interim at a later point in time. So the digital way to do that is virtual education days, and so essentially, this gets rid of lizard bag bags and says, if we would like to, we can do that, a virtual education delivery model. This just provides the opportunity to do that. We really have no plans to do that or change that, we are way over our minimum number of hours that we have with our students, and we would have to miss 16, 18, 19 days of school before we would be below the state minimum in our hours. So there's really no, no plans to do that, but it just kind of, what do I want to say, modernizes that from a lizard bag, casual virtual, I mean, days. I know there's probably a lot of smaller, real-world schools that are out of school a lot, that may want to, that may do something like that. Next is 8450 and 8450.1, so 8450.1, I'm recommending to rescind, that is protective facial covering through pandemic and epidemic events. This was enacted right in the throes of COVID and lockdown and so forth, and to align with what the state was doing with state laws of just trying to provide us as a school district more specifics and more guidelines, since obviously those things were all new at that point. This, and then also the protocols, or I'm sorry, control casual conduct, casual contact communicable disease, it's easy for me to say, putting, or crossing out that last line there allows us to have more flexibility in those areas, since obviously if it is a law, we will be following it, but if it's a protocol or a guideline, those are things that the school district that we would like to have as some flexibility in that. So that is why that particular line was crossed out, and that's why I asked for rescinding of that other policy.
Sure. That, the protective facial coverage as well, that was enacted not just during COVID, but during the state mandated masking portion of COVID. So it was really capturing all of the intricacies of what the state mandated policy said, and what all these specific exceptions were at those times, and all of the rules associated with that entire year where masking was mandated, so.
Yep. November 21.
Let me recall that it was an emergency order from the governor, which ended in June or July of '21. And so the policy was input in November of '20, some six months after the pandemic started, and so it was reflective of an emergency order by the governor, which was then again removed. June or July of 2021, at that point, it became recommendations and not directives.
Right.
And so that's the, that's the key point.
I think during that time, particularly, we wrestled with that a lot as a board, because we got a lot of input from the community certainly, on masks or not masking and so forth, and our intent was to follow, follow the guidelines, which allowed our students to stay in school, you know, physically stay in school as much as possible. So when there was changing, changes in the guidelines, there were also changes in some of our practices and procedures, which was sometimes awkward, but I think we made a great choice by having our students in school as much as we possibly could. So when people say, well, you know, we didn't always have masks, you're right, we didn't always have masks, because that allowed some folks who were really having difficulty with masks to be able to come to school. So we tried to be sensitive to all the needs of all the students during that time, and you know, you can look back as a Monday morning quarterback, so to speak, and, and say, well, you know, the best choice might have been to do this. Well, maybe so, but the choices that we made were difficult ones about masks in particular, but our goal was to try to keep students in school as much as possible, and I think we did that, and I think that in the long run, that was the best choice for our community.
It was a given that we were not going to either make 100% of people happy, or address 100% of people's concerns, you know, there were arguments on all sides, it was an impossible period to again satisfy everyone, it was impossible. However, was that?
I don't have.
Yeah, so however, like what you're looking to do, David, and this is the real foot stomp for here, again, our district is one of eight out of 600 districts in the state to get the five-star rating that it did. And why is that? I think one of the primary reasons is we stayed in school. Certainly, our teachers, our administrators, our staff enabled the success that we've had. Other districts, not so, right? I think, as I recall, we're the only one in the area here, you know, including all schools, you know, Oakwood and Centerville and Dayton, et cetera, that came out with that rating. And so that is a reflection of teamwork and dedication, God knows our nurses, we're given an impossible task. task, and it was just, it was unmanageable. And administrators were involved, you're watching videos, okay, he was at five-point-nine-nine feet for fifteen minutes and one second cumulatively over the last twenty-four hours. So yes, that student is going to quarantine for the second time in three weeks, you know? And so it was, it was just a chaotic, insane period. And I often reflect upon those that, you know, made it a successful ultimately outcome. And again, the independent, objective measurement of that is that state report card. This district, by any measure, sells, and it takes everyone from every area to make that happen. And we need to always be mindful of that.
So to summarize those, our end policy, can I go back to?
Yep.
This policy is reflective of the period of the entire school year where masking was mandated by the state. It was the whole school year that masking wasn't that controversial at the local level because it wasn't our choice. And this policy really is just capturing all of the things the state said during that school year, and it was never rescinded following that. Right. So that agreed, agreed. However, regarding this policy, it's really just was capturing what the state may have to do during that first school year where we were mandated to be a mask.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a question on that one, but I think I understand that my ask would be, if Dr. Cozad or whoever, can just double check, make sure. What I want to make sure is that anybody who would still like to wear a mask is able to. I don't believe that anything here takes away that choice, but I just want to make sure that it doesn't. I believe I saw something in the past, there were policies, whatever, about you can't wear.
Halloween masks.
Right, right. So my ask is just make sure we don't miss something and have to come back. Just let's please be aware of that. I want to make sure that anybody who would choose to wear a mask and still, a facial medical mask, can still choose to do that. I just want to make sure we're not doing abuse.
That's the way I understand. I would double check on it, make sure that that isn't in there, but definitely.
Definitely.
And students and staff.
Yep. Yes, a few more. I'm sorry. So fifty-one-eleven is eligibility of resident, non-resident students. So yeah, the highlighting was not done on this one. So option, it's under, so it's page two, optional tuition-free education. And under that is D and F are the new ones. Everything else is the same in this, and this really just aligns with our current negotiated agreements with all of our classified staff and certified staff, that if there is a staff member or employee here, that they can have their child attend tuition-free at school. So that is just to align with our current contracts. So D and F, they were not highlighted. Everything else is the same. And then my last highlight here, ninety-one-thirty is the public complaint. So again, this was an old policy, two thousand and three or something. This is pretty old, two thousand and six. And so they mentioned curriculum, county curriculum directors and so forth. So we're really looking at this for nine months to a year and just trying to figure out what to do with this policy as a way to update it. And so trying to make it more thorough, but not more complicated, and hopefully we've done that. So essentially, level one is just that informal piece. There is a form that will be posted on the internet. It's not part of the actual policy, but the requirements within those forms are in the policy. So again, just to provide, in my opinion, just to provide some flexibility in maybe going to change this little thing in the form, those things, the requirements of what is in the form is in the policy. Those pieces can't be changed, but that form will be available if the board approves the policy, will be online. At that informal level, we're trying to resolve, again, like we would like to do with any problem, if there's an issue or concern, it's talk to the person closest to that situation. If that's the teacher, if that's the media specialist, talking to them first and see if they can be resolved. At that point, if it can't, then it would go up to Director Prichlum and myself, and then maybe we can quickly take care of it. Maybe it's a easy to resolve situation. If not, then we would appoint a committee that would, again, those requirements of that committee are in the policy. Who is on that committee or possibilities on that committee to take a look at that, provide a recommendation to myself, and then I either agree or disagree with that recommendation. And then if the complainant disagrees with that, again, at each of these levels, there's an appeal part that they can say, well, I disagree with you, whatever it is, I'm, whatever it is, they disagree, they can go to the next level. And so if they disagree with me, then they can take it to the board level. And at that point, the board will hear that. And if they choose, you know, at that part of the level, again, there's timelines and so forth in there. So if it gets to that level, the board has to make some type of decision, whether they agree with my decision or not disagree with my decision, but they can't remove anything without, if it gets to that level, they can't remove anything without having to go through that. If it gets to level four, they have to make some type of decision one way or another, if it gets to level four. So at each of those levels, it can be resolved. So obviously, we would like to resolve it at the lowest, not the lowest, but the closest to the situation as possible. But if not, then there's a way to field that process. Again, like I said, the form, once it gets approved, requirements of the form are in the policy. Any questions on that? Trying to make it thorough, but not too complicated, and hopefully we've done that. So that's all I have on highlighting some of the policy areas. Any questions? So if there are comments or suggestions or thoughts, please get to me, to be Audra also, since she's the board rep with the policy, so that we can get it to you sooner rather than later. Like you said, so we can take a look at it, see if there's a possibility or see if we agree or disagree, or if there's another way to do that. But the only, so far from the board, the only thing I see as to check on is choosing to wear a mask or not, if that is still either prohibited or not prohibited in the board policy. Was there anything else, questions on the board policy that needs to be checked on? I just want to make sure. Anything else?
I think one thing to underscore here is, again, it's two readings for policy changes. Dr. Brenner, thank you tonight for your comments. I mean, that's how we know if you bring something up. So there's opportunity for other inputs in, what, two weeks, the next meeting?
Correct.
So there's a two-week window here where you can email members or talk to the administration with your inputs on these or any other policies.
I won't reiterate, I'm sorry, I won't reiterate. If members of the committee or even members of the board have concerns, recommended changes, that earlier you get them to a board member or to board members to Dr. Cozad, it helps the draft change prior to the next meeting. Because trying to change it live during the course of the meeting becomes very challenging, and it makes Mr. Linen really angry, because it makes the minutes really, really hard.
I don't think I've ever seen him angry.
He quietly angry.
On another matter, I have a couple of comments here real quickly. Last year, we had one SRO for four hours. We now have two SROs full-time. The board has approved the cost sharing of a third SRO with the township. I was at a township meeting last week, and I would just say there is significant uncertainty as to the time, and I would say maybe even ultimately the fulfillment of that third SRO. So if you care about that, you might want to contact the township and express your interest if you would like to see another SRO in our school district. Also, just to be really clear here, people are not carrying guns in the school. They're not authorized to do so, and they are not, it will not happen. To be really clear here, they are approved access to firearms across all of our schools. Big difference. So please make sure you understand that if you care about this subject and comment on it. So, thank you.
Any other things to mention? I have just a quick comment, just as a representative, to represent what our teachers and staff are, so very highly community-minded and so forth. One of our retired teachers this past weekend was named Citizen of the Year at the Spring Valley Potato Festival. So Chris Marshall, who was a special ed teacher for a long time, and also first grade for many years, nationally certified master teacher, was recognized as Citizen of the Year for Spring Valley. So it kind of is a good example of the quality of community-minded people we have in our teaching staff and our personnel. So that's just a good news kind of thing. She's not working for the district anymore. She's retired, but she's still making a big difference in her personal talent. So I thought that was worth mentioning.
Thank you for sharing, Mr. Brenner. At this time, I'm going to make a motion that the board will meet in executive session for the purpose of considering the employment and compensation of a public employee per RC one-two-one dot two-two-G one.
Hold on.
In a second. I move to you, Mr. Brenner, and then Mrs. Flannan. We are not expecting any action whatsoever, but of course, you're welcome to stick around if you want to do so. Please come on.
Mr. Tancin?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Nolan?
Yes.
All right, we're in executive session at eight nineteen PM. Thank you very much for coming.
Good to go. All right, we are out of the executive session at 9:01. And I will make a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Carpenter.
Mr. Price?